Welcome to the Bellevue City Council Meeting. It's Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand nineteen at six P M. We will start with the Pledge of Allegiance and we have the Arrow of Light Den Pack Thirty Seven here to lead us off. In that if we could have them come forward. And if you would remain standing, we'll do the invocation and pa- Associate Pastor Mick Huntley with Midland Bible Baptist Churches here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mister Mayor and the council for letting me come and pray this evening over the meeting. Let's pray. Father, I want to thank you just for this chance that this council has to gather together, Lord, and to discuss matters pertaining to our city. Father, and we pray that things would be done decently in order tonight, Lord. We ask that you would give wisdom. Lord, that they make decisions, Lord, that are right and that honor and glorify you, Lord, and then are best for our city. Father, we thank you for our mayor. Pray that you be with him and bless him and his family, Lord, and protect them, Lord, and give them wisdom. Father, be with our city administrators and officials, Lord, and certainly here those here in the council. Father, we thank you for their time that they dedicate, Lord, to the betterment of our city. Lord, we just ask you to give each of them wisdom, Lord, and bless each of them. Father, we thank you for our first responders, Lord, and for our law enforcement here in Bellevue. Lord, we pray that just thank you for how they protect us and keep us safe, Lord. We pray that you do the same for them, protect them, Lord, and and guide them and direct them, Father, and Father, we certainly also want to continue to lift up our military. Lord, we thank you for the influence they have here in our city. Father, and we pray that you'd be with those who are abroad serving our country, Father, and here serving our country, Lord, to protect them and bring them home safely to their families, Lord, and we just again, we thank you for this time to meet this evening, Lord. Again, we ask that you would be honored and glorified through the decisions that are made tonight, Lord, and we give you the praise and the thanks for it all. We ask these things in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. And thank you, Arrow of Light Den Pack Thirty Seven, for being here. Susan would call the order and take roll call, please.
Mister Stinson.
Here.
Mister Cook.
Here.
Mister Shannon. Mister Preister.
Here.
Mister Burns.
Here.
Miss Welch.
Here.
Thank you. Councilman Shannon is tied up doing tax work tonight, so that's his business and that's where he's at. This meeting is conducted in accordance with the Nebraska Open Meetings Act. A copy of that act is located on the rear wall of the council chambers. Item five, approval of agenda consent agenda, claims and advisory committee reports. Five, five A, approval of the agenda. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
Moved by Burns, seconded by Cook. Any comments, questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Five B is approval of the consent agenda. Items marked with an asterisk are approved where the item is unless otherwise removed. Does anyone? Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda and then I want to make an amendment. Or I just want to make a request that we remove item sixteen B, sixteen C, and sixteen E off consent to the regular agenda.
So we got a motion. Councilman Preister?
Did you make the motion? You made it before. Do you want to make it?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Minus those items.
Minus those items. Sorry.
And seconded by Preister? Motion by Cook, seconded by Preister to approve the agenda, the consent agenda, removing items sixteen B, C, and E. Please vote.
Just a second. Our computer is still stuck on the vote.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and do that one just by roll call. Mister Stinson.
Yes.
Mister Cook.
Yes.
Mister Preister.
Yes.
Mister Burns.
Yes.
And Miss Welch.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So it moves us to number seven. Special presentations. And I don't normally read, but my writer did such a good job here on putting the notes together that I'm going to read this. So this evening, we would like to recognize and thank a longtime Bellevue resident for all he has done to inform and promote our great community through the creation of a number of popular social media outlets that he started. Garrett Sims is a longtime Bellevue resident and educator with the Bellevue Public Schools District. Garrett and his wife Chris have three children that currently attend school in Bellevue. Those who know Garrett best say that he loves his hometown and he always had the best interests of Bellevue in mind. If you follow Garrett on Facebook, you know he is also a big fan of food and wanted to find a way to promote the local restaurants in our community. In July of two thousand fifteen, Garrett started the Taste of Bellevue Facebook group as a way to acknowledge and promote the forty-plus locally owned and operated restaurants that call the Bellevue area home. Currently, this Facebook group has over thirteen thousand seven hundred members who use this resource to share their support of good food in our community. This group has made a world of difference to many of these restaurants as a free way to promote what they have to offer, and I'm happy to report that many of these restaurants and establishments are thriving, thanks in part to Mister Sims and his Facebook group. The popularity of the Taste of Bellevue page led to the creation of the Bellevue four-one-one Facebook group in September of two thousand fifteen. Currently, this group is over fifteen thousand five hundred members strong and is a way to promote Bellevue events, happenings, accomplishments, and other positive attributes of the Bellevue area. Soon afterwards, Bellevue Biz was created in January of two thousand sixteen and has almost eight thousand members. This group is used to promote, promote, and support small business right here in Bellevue, Nebraska. All three of these groups continue to grow and continue to provide Bellevue residents another outlet as a way to get news, information, and notices about Bellevue. Garrett, you are selfless, you're humble, and you're a true asset to the city of Bellevue. The Jewel of Bellevue is the highest civic award that can be honored, awarded by the city, and in my opinion, this is a very appropriate award for Mister Sims. Garrett, could you and your wife Chris and your mom Jean come to the podium, please, so I can present you with the Jewel of Bellevue? It's one of the reasons I ran for Mayor Garrett, so I could get you that award. Moving on to item number eight, organizational matters. None. Nine, approved citizen communication. Nine A, request to address council by John Masters, nine oh eight Casper Street. And Mister Masters?
Hello.
If you'd state your name and sign in, state your name and address.
Uh, John Masters, nine oh eight Casper Street, number three-two-two.
Thank you.
City council members, uh, my name is John. I want to tell you why you should support me and help take up this cost to implement a minimum wage in the city of Bellevue. I will cover what the minimum wage is, what the impact is currently, it has on our citizens. I will cover why the city can support this legally, and it should morally and economically as well. Currently, the federal minimum wage is seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour and has not risen since July two thousand nine. The state minimum wage is nine dollars an hour and has not risen since January first, two thousand sixteen. Both the state and federal minimum wage for tipped employees is two dollars and thirteen cents an hour. Currently in Nebraska, a person making minimum wage will earn three hundred and sixty dollars a week before taxes or deductions. Minimum wage has a variety of impacts on our city. Workers who are making minimum wage are going to struggle to afford decent housing in this community. Most apartments will require you to prove that you make three times the monthly rent, and even our cheapest one-bedroom apartments in this city go for five seventy-five to six hundred dollars a month. This puts your housing budget at forty percent of your gross pay before utilities and insurance and other expenses. Now you have to pay for food and childcare and healthcare and transportation and all the other little things that life throws your way. Now we pay more as citizens because we offer our safety nets and social programs to make sure people survive. This pushes the burden to us as taxpayers rather than to the business to, to pay a livable wage to its employees. Why should we pay more so business owners can get their labor subsidized by us? The city can implement its own minimum wage. Nebraska has no preemption laws that would prevent a city from doing so. The federal government has failed to raise the minimum wage. Our state refuses to raise the minimum wage. I think the local cities should be allowed to make a local decision and do the things that will best serve our community. I believe we have a moral obligation to help our fellow citizens and to protect them from businesses that only pay the legal minimum. Our citizens that earn minimum wage are not just teenagers flipping burgers. They are single mothers, single fathers, workers with mental and physical disabilities, and even grandparents that couldn't afford to retire and instead have to continue to work. Any increase in income to a minimum wage earner is put right back into the local economy. They do not have any extra, and they currently go without in some area of their life. Will you support making their life better? I ask that my city council bring up an ordinance that requires businesses in the city of Bellevue to pay their employees a livable wage. City council, we support our poorest, our most in need, those without a voice and demand they be paid a livable wage, demand that we have local control over our well-being. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Mister Masters. Well presented, and I'll turn it over to the council, see if they have any questions. Councilman Preister?
As much a comment, I appreciate that you're expressing some compassion for those who are struggling, and I think we all have compassion, but yours led to you doing some research coming before us. Apparently, you've been to the state, you've seen the federal level, and in some exasperation, I'm assuming, then are petitioning the council to take some action.
Yeah, um, there has been no city in Nebraska before that's implemented its own minimum wage. Uh, so I'm asking us to be, take that step forward and, you know, again, do what's best for our local citizens. Uh, you know, I, we, the state tried to pass a minimum wage bill and it's failed multiple times. Um, and it's going nowhere, right? So what can we do today to improve our citizens here in the city of Bellevue?
The question comes to mind is if Bellevue has a higher minimum wage, and you mentioned that tipped employees, restaurant workers, or others that receive tips getting only two dollars and fifty cents an hour.
Thirteen cents.
Oh, excuse me, thirteen cents, even less. So if Bellevue were to raise its minimum wage requirements, what impact does that have in La Vista, in Gretna, in the rest of Sarpy County, or even in Omaha where it hasn't been raised? And is that an unfair competitive advantage? I, I don't know if you've gone there, but some things that if you have information on, I would welcome.
Yeah, no, I, um, in our local area, uh, there isn't any, again, no city has implemented its own minimum. But, um, if you look in like Iowa, there are counties that have implemented its own minimum wage. Um, that's higher than the state minimum for those, and you've seen, uh, cities throughout the United States raise, uh, their, their own minimum wage as well. And those local economies, uh, have those citizens earn more immediately and are putting money into their pockets to take care of basic necessities. And it's having minimal impact on the labor force, and unemployment rates are staying, um, approximately the same as that, flat or steady.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Well, I appreciate you bringing the awareness and that, uh, I think everybody was listening, so.
Alright, thank you.
Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to item number ten, liquor licenses. Ten A, recommendation to approve a special designated liquor license for Paul Klabundi doing business as Century Lounge for Thursday, October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, from twelve P M. to twelve A M. for a Halloween party at twenty-one oh nine Franklin Street. Alternate date is Friday, November first, two thousand nineteen. Is there a representative here?
Yes, I am.
Please state your name and.
So I'm Jennifer Philly, representing the Century Lounge, and the address there is twenty-one oh nine Franklin Street, Bellevue, Nebraska, six-eight-zero-zero-five.
Okay. Is there anything you'd like to state before I open up the public hearing?
I have no, nothing to state.
Okay. And just a question I have before we start, um, the alternate date, what, is that for bad weather or?
Uh, well, I was thinking about doing it on actual Halloween and then I figured Friday would be a better night to do it, so that's just the two dates I chose.
Okay, so it'll be one or the other.
I'm pretty much going to do it on Friday.
Okay.
That's my plan anyway.
One or the other, not both?
Yes, just one.
Alright. Um, I will open up for public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against the liquor license application? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing and, uh, turn it over to the council. Is there any questions or comments from the council?
I just have one quick question. Is there going to be music?
No live music. Maybe a karaoke, uh, machine on the inside.
Okay.
No, no different than the jukebox.
Security?
Uh, void wise. Uh, yeah, we'll have two, a doorman in the front and a doorman in the back.
Thank you.
Huh?
Councilman Cook? Or Councilman Burns? Looking at you.
I move that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission, a special designated liquor license for Paul Klabundi doing business as Century Lounge for Thursday, October thirty-first, two thousand nineteen, from twelve P M. to twelve A M. for a Halloween party at twenty-one oh nine Franklin Street. Alternate date, Friday, November first, two thousand nineteen.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch. Any further questions or comments? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Thank you.
Item ten B, recommendation to approve a special designated liquor license for Willow Springs Bottling Company doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart for Friday, November twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, for a wine tasting at Daniel J. Gross High School, seventy-seven hundred South Forty-third Street, Bellevue. Is there a representative here? Yep.
Hi, my name's Jim Subject. I'm the manager and owner of Cornhusker Beverage Mart. And Rusty, I'm not the mayor anymore. Remember the last time I was here, I was the mayor.
State, state your address, Jim, please.
Fifty-one fourteen Gertrude.
Okay.
And, uh, Daniel Gross has had a wine tasting for the last fifteen years, and we've worked with them. It's a fundraiser and a fundraiser. It raises fun for the parents and, uh, people, the benefactors that want to come to the wine tasting, and it also gives them knowledge of different wines on an annual basis. Like I said, this, this will be the fifteenth year in a row. We do it pretty orderly because, uh, even though they are, are getting tastes of the different wines, we use a one-ounce shot measured pour on each one of the bottles so that we know exactly how much everybody's getting, so nobody, uh, gets in excess of, of alcohol at that time. We've had, haven't had any problems in the past, and we don't expect to have any in the future.
Okay. I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here to speak for or against a special liquor license? Seeing nobody come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Is there any questions or comments from the council? Councilwoman Welch?
Just a question, Jim. Is this, um, liquor license just for consumption, or can people, if they take, I've gone to wine tastings where you have one and you're like, ooh, I really like that one. I'm gonna take that home with me type of thing.
It's for both.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Jim, I believe when the mayor referred to you as mayor, it was for Willow Springs Mayor.
That's it.
So you can still wear that title?
Okay.
I would like to make a motion that we recommend approval to the Nebraska Liquor Control Commission for a special designated liquor license for Willow Springs Bottling Company doing business as Cornhusker Beverage Mart for Friday, November twenty-second, two thousand nineteen, for a wine tasting at Daniel Gross High School, seventy-seven hundred South Forty-third Street, Bellevue.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch. Any further comments or questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Item eleven. Ordinances for adoption. Third reading, there are none. Item twelve, ordinances for public hearing. Second reading, there are none. Item thirteen, ordinances for introduction. First reading, ordinance, thirteen A, ordinance number three-nine-seven-six, request to annex lot thirty-seven Orchard Valley. Susan, could you read the ordinance, please?
An ordinance to annex to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, certain lands, lots, and real estate lying within lot thirty-seven Orchard Valley to the city of Bellevue, Sarpy County, Nebraska, and designating an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be held November fifth, two thousand nineteen, at six P M. here in the council chambers. Item thirteen B, ordinance number three-nine-seven-seven, an ordinance to amend section two dash twenty-eight of the Bellevue City Code pertaining to executive sessions. Susan, could you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to amend section two dash twenty-eight of the Bellevue Municipal Code pertaining to executive sessions of the city council to repeal such section as heretofore existing and to provide an effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be held November fifth, two thousand nineteen, at six P M. here in the council chambers. Item thirteen C, ordinance number three-nine-seven-eight, an ordinance to amend Article Four, Chapter Two of the Bellevue City Code by adding a new section two dash two-zero-eight regarding removal of an elected official for misconduct. Susan, could you read the ordinance?
An ordinance to amend Article Four, Chapter Two of the Bellevue Municipal Code by adding a new section two dash two-oh-eight regarding removal of an elected official for misconduct and to provide for the effective date of this ordinance.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be held November fifth, two thousand nineteen, at six P M. here in the council chambers. Item thirteen C one, approve amended policy resolution thirty-five regarding principles of conduct and decorum. No action required on policy resolution thirty-five until third reading as said policy corresponds with ordinance number three-nine-seven-eight. Item thirteen D, number, ordinance number three-nine-seven-nine, request to rezone lots one through seventy-two and outlots A through C, Bell Lago replat one from R G fifty dash P S and R G twenty-eight dash P S to R G eight dash P S in order to facilitate a townhome development. Susan, could you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska as provided for by Article Three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen by changing the zone classification of land located at or about the southeast corner of Forty-eighth Street and Cape Heart, more particularly described in Section One of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
Thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be held November fifth, two thousand nineteen, at six P M. here in the council chambers. Thirteen E, ordinance number three-nine-eight-zero, request to rezone lot one, south. Thirteen E, ordinance number three nine eight zero, request to rezone lot one, South Woods, replat three, from MHBJA, BJ, BG, BGH and RG dash eight to RG dash eight for the purpose of an elementary school. Susan, could you read that ordinance?
An ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the city of Bellevue, Nebraska, as provided for by Article three of ordinance number thirty-six nineteen, by changing the zone classification of land located at or about Fort Creek Road and Child's Road West, more particularly described in section one of the ordinance, and to provide an effective date.
The se- thank you. The second reading and public hearing will be held November fifth, two thousand nineteen, at six PM here in the council chambers. Item fourteen, public hearing on matters other than ordinances. Fourteen A, approval of an event application for the Greater Bellevue Area Chamber of Commerce, Bellevue Economic Enhancement Foundation for Nebraska's Official Veterans Parade on Saturday, November ninth, two thousand nineteen, utilizing Mission Avenue to Franklin Street, ending at Washington Park from seven AM to twelve PM.
Hello?
Hi.
So November ninth is our annual Nebraska's Official Veterans Day Parade, um, held for several years now.
Name and address, Kim.
Sorry, Kevin Hetzel?
Yep.
One four five zero seven, South Twenty-first Street, Bellevue, six eight one two three.
You'll get used to that. I'm gonna go ahead and open the public hearing on this. Um, is there anyone here to speak for or against the Veterans Day Parade permit? For or against? Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Uh, any questions for Kevin? Alright. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve fourteen A.
Second.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Burns. Any further comments or questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
You're good to go.
Thank you.
Thanks. Item fifteen, resolutions. Fifteen A, resolution number two zero one nine dash three six, approve adoption to preserve the city's flexibility in financing improvements to street districts not to exceed five million eight hundred thousand dollars, and authorize mayor to sign. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I will move to approve resolution fifteen A as just read.
I'll second that.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Welch. Any questions or comments? Councilman Preister?
Thank you again, Mayor. I would just also add, uh, our finance department is working well with Public Works to look at all options. But I noted today that the city of Bellevue was designated by, I believe, Standard Empours with a double A-plus bond rating. So I think that's another credit to the city, and it speaks well for how the mayor and the council and all of the city employees have managed the budget. So kudos to Bellevue. Nice job, everybody.
So we have a motion by Preister, seconded by Welch. Please vote.
All voted yes.
Fifteen B, resolution number two zero one nine dash three seven, approve and sign resolution authorizing the approval of the professional services agreement with Olson, not to exceed eight hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve fifteen B.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Stenson. Any further questions, comments? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen, current business, uh, Texas sixteen B, approve and authorize the mayor to sign the agreement for services with MAPPA not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars for the analysis of city current election districts and for the development of new city election district boundaries to equalize population between districts as a result of the new annexed areas. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen B.
I'll second that.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Welch. Any further questions or comments? Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. Tammy, do we have an idea of a timeline on this? I'm just thinking, I think it said December, and I'm thinking, do they need that much time? Cause I know some of the people in the annexed areas are just already wondering and they're anxious. And I don't want to rush this, and I'm glad MAPPA's doing it. But do we have an idea of a timeline?
Yes, so final vote from council will be in December. It's an ordinance that takes three readings, so that's why that December timeline was presented. However, MAPPA should have information to us within the next seven to ten days. And then meetings will start to occur with, um, small groups of city council members to kind of start the process and kind of explain the options that MAPPA's presenting.
Great. Thank you very much.
Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. If it's December when we vote, how does that affect if someone wants to file December first? Can we, can we, do we have to have three readings? Can we, uh, you know, do the, uh, eliminate the third reading after public hearing or something?
You have to have three readings on this ordinance, and the soonest, because annexations didn't get passed until the October first reading, we couldn't approve a MAPPA contract for services until this reading. Um, so timeline-wise, the first reading in December was the soonest that we could do it, um, which is plenty of time when we're looking at the election date in May. Um, we're still fine pursuant to statute on that. So I would just hold off on filing until after that.
Okay, we have a motion by Burns, seconded by Welch. Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve the low bid from Christensen Excavating Company, Inc. in an amount of not to exceed eighty-eight hundred dollars for the World Baseball Village concession building project, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Councilman Preister?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that we approve item sixteen C as you just read.
Second.
Motion by Preister, seconded by Burns. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen D, approve the interlocal agreement with the Papio Missouri River Natural Resources District for the Sarpy County Flood Plane Buyout Program, not to exceed ninety-four thousand dollars, and authorize the mayor to sign. Councilman Burns?
I move that we approve item sixteen D.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voted yes.
Thank you. Item sixteen C, approve the acquisitions, permanent and temporary easements for the Thirty-Sixth Street improvement. Oh, sorry, that's sixteen E. Councilman Cook?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll make a motion, we approve sixteen E.
I'll second that.
Motion by Cook, seconded by Welch. Any comments or questions? Please vote.
All voting yes.
Thank you. Item seventeen is the administration reports. Are there any comments or questions from the council? Councilman Cook?
I just want to make one quick comment. Uh, yesterday, the Bellevue Public Library had its ninetieth birthday and the tenth anniversary of the Friends of the Library. I stopped down there for about an hour, and they did one heck of a good job, uh, for the public to come in. Uh, I went down there when there was some musical instruments playing, and it was a, uh, a very good event, and there was, uh, real good attendance to it too, which I'm very happy, and I, I think it's just is the work that they do in the library, why the city employees are outstanding people down there. Thank.
Thank you for attending. Okay, we will enter the reports into the record. There is no closed session this evening, so I will take a motion to adjourn. Councilman Burns?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Burns, seconded by Preister. Please vote.
You did? Yours coming through? There it goes. All voting yes.